I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we gather on this Veterans Day, we pause to honor the men and women who have served our nation with courage and selflessness. We are grateful for their dedication and for the sacrifices made in the pursuit of peace and freedom. May their example inspire us to serve our community with the same sense of duty and purpose. As we begin this meeting, may our discussions be thoughtful, our decisions fair, and our actions guided by respect for all. Next, I would like to recognize our Miami Valley Communication Council TV operator, Evan Russell. Thank you for your assistance, Evan. Okay. I would like to call on Mrs. Fisher at this point for the approval of the minutes for the October 28th meeting and the workshop meetings.
Your Honor, I was going to say, Your Honor, I did review both the council meeting and the workshop meeting minutes. I do find them in order, and I move for approval.
Second.
Moved in second. Does anyone have any questions or comments about minutes? Okay, then call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
abstained.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes. At this point, I am absolutely delighted to recognize our annual recognition of the Alter Golf Team who have won the, I think I said that last year, and the year before. This is number four, isn't it? Yep, four in a row. It's amazing. Let's see. Coach Alex Schuster will accept the certificate, and then we have a sign and a picture that we need to take. So let me come down there and give this to the students. And then you all can join. Coach, did you have a few words you wanted to say?
Sure. Sure.
Go to the microphone. Go to the microphone, so everybody can hear you.
Yes, sir.
Sorry about that. You know, we just want to thank everyone again for their continued support of our program. It has become an annual tradition, hopefully, and that will hopefully continue in the years to come. We appreciate the recognition, and it was great to be able to do it this year right here in Kettering at NCR. So thank you once again for recognizing us this season, and go Knights.
This is a certificate of recognition and congratulations, as hereby presented to the Alter High School Boys Golf Team. The city of Kettering is honored to recognize the Alter Boys Golf Team for their hard-fought and successful 2025 golf season. Winning the 2025 Division II State Championship exemplifies the dedication, hard work, and sportsmanship exhibited by these talented athletes. This achievement has brought distinction and honor to Alter High School and the Kettering community. It is with great pleasure that City Council and the Kettering community congratulates the Boys Golf Team on this exceptional accomplishment and extends our best wishes for continued success, presented this 11th day of November 2025. I'll give you that. Okay. Thank you. I'm familiar with this sign. It has the cross out of the date. We did that. Oh, yeah. There you go.
Can you imagine? Four. Thank you for asking. Can you imagine? Four. Yes, sir. We have Senior Andrew Gorkinow, who is also a state Division One up, Senior Lucas Silling, Junior Matthew Crush, Junior Miles High, and Senior Charlie Lynch.
Let me hide. I can duck down. Come on. Okay. A couple more. Thank you. That's the worst in that, when our head beeping.
Any more pictures? The boys be a real, real high. Just your parents.
It's hard to imagine what it's like to have fun and play golf. I don't know that. Looks cool, though.
Yeah, they're a pretty awesome bunch. Okay, we have a special presentation tonight. I thought I saw Lisa out there. This is for the State of the Arts, members of the Arts Council, presenting to Lisa Becker, Katie LaPresti, Tracy McElfrish, and Shane Weber. And Lisa, didn't I say? Yeah, Lisa's up first. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Lisa Becker. I serve on Kettering Arts Council here. The Kettering Arts Council is a 15-member volunteer committee of artists, educators, community leaders. They're dedicated to advancing Kettering's cultural life. Our mission is to ensure access to the arts for all ages, to inspire creativity, and to strengthen our community through Rosewood Art Center and the Art in Public Places program. Tonight, we are proud to share the state of the arts and how cultural arts continue to drive education, engagement, and economic vitality here in Kettering. Kettering is a city where creativity meets community, a place that involves innovation, values people of every age, and believes that access to the arts is essential to a vibrant, connected, and livable city. Whether you're creating art, raising a family, or enjoying retirement, Kettering offers space, support, and inspiration to live fully and creatively. Kettering is one of the few sized, mid-sized cities in Ohio that integrates the arts into nearly every facet of our community life. Some notable figures in this year, our beloved instructors, Ms. Sammy Sue and Ms. Nancy, celebrated over 40 years of teaching, inspiring thousands of Kettering youth to dance, to tap, to filet, and to puree. And Nancy Cartwright, one of our Fairmont High School graduates and the voice of Bart Simpson, returned to Kettering this summer to share her artwork at Rosewood Art Center, and she was welcomed home by the Fairmont Marching Band in a very special performance. Megs LaVieure, once a young student at Rosewood's pottery program, is now a professional ceramic artist and continues to return each year for Art in the Commons, where she won People's Choice and Best Presentation this year. And now I'll introduce Katie LaPresti.
Thank you, Lisa. I'm Katie LaPresti, and I'm proud to share how Kettering ensures the arts are accessible for everyone. Accessibility is a cornerstone of a vibrant community, one that prioritizes both creativity and well-being. At Rosewood Art Center, we provide professional studios in ceramics, printmaking, painting, and more, with affordable classes, open studios, and exhibitions for artists at every level. Community events such as Art on the Playground, Art on the Commons, and a Rosewood Holiday Arts Festival offer free, high-quality cultural experiences that create lifelong memories for families across the region. Highlights from 2025 include the free signature events welcomed thousands of visitors from across southwest Ohio to experience the arts in Kettering. A teen printmaking initiative partnered with Kettering City Schools, Dayton Regional STEM School, and Dayton Public Schools, providing transportation and eliminating barriers for participation. Artists in residence exhibited side-by-side in the annual Works on Paper Exhibition at the Kettering Health Art Gallery, reinforcing that art in Kettering is for everyone. Kettering stands as a regional leader in the arts, recognized for integrating creativity into every level of community life. Through visionary programs like Rosewood Art Center and Art in Public Places, Kettering sets a standard for how cities can nurture innovation, accessibility, and cultural vitality. Highlights from 2025 include members of the Kettering Arts Council and AIPP Committee bring vast professional expertise to help guide cultural arts programs with creativity and care. Rosewood's talented teaching artists like ceramics instructor April LaMaster and Shelley Burden, to our Artist in Residence Dolora Buford Buchanan, seen here with the dinosaur she made out of recycled materials, demonstrate the leadership and excellence that make Kettering a regional arts destination. Our own Kettering Arts Council and numerous volunteers have led efforts to welcome artists from near and far to Kettering. From hosting them in our homes to welcoming them in our galleries and parks, we set an example of how to welcome creatives to our favorite city. Now I'd like to welcome Tracy McElfrish.
Thank you, baby. Hi, I'm Tracy McElfrish, and I'd like to talk about how the arts strengthen our local economy. Events like Art on the Commons, art commissions, and partnerships with regional organizations help arts build sustainable careers right here in Kettering. Located minutes away from Dayton and within an hour of Columbus and Cincinnati, Kettering offers major art markets while maintaining affordable studio housing and expedition space. Through partnerships with Wright State University, Sinclair Community College, Stiver School for the Arts, Fairmont High School, the Dayton Regional STEM School, and the Modern College of Design, students gain real-world skills in teamwork, planning, and design thinking, skills that strengthen both our creative and local workforce. The arts are also an economic powerhouse. Nationwide, the nonprofit art sector generates $151.7 billion annually, supporting 4.6 billion jobs. In Ohio alone, the creative economy contributes over $41 billion and supports nearly 29,000 workers. Here in Kettering, tens of thousands attend programs at Rosewood, special events in our parks like Art on the Commons, concerts by the Kettering Civic Band and the Children's Choir, and performances by the Children's Theater, in turn supporting local businesses and restaurants. Enrollment at Rosewood has continued to climb each year with almost a 50% increase year-to-date. Enrollments in the past two years between 2023 and 2025, each of these numbers represents more participation, more creativity, and more impact on our city. Now I'd like to welcome Shane Weber.
Thank you, Tracy. Good evening. I'm Shane Weber of the Kettering Arts Council, and I'd like to speak about Kettering's cultural arts program and the power of creativity and connection. Kettering's cultural arts program fosters a deep sense of belonging by connecting people of all ages, backgrounds, and experiences through creativity. From free community festivals to accessible classes and public art, every resident has an opportunity to participate, express themselves, and feel part of something larger. These shared experiences strengthen relationships, enhance quality of life, and make Kettering a city where everyone can thrive through the arts. Highlights in 2025 include parent and child classes, Art for the Extreme Beginner, Strive Program with Fairmont High School, and the Rotary Club. We live in a city that values creativity as essential to community well-being, economic strength, and civic identity. Each investment in the arts, whether it's a public artwork, a class, a community event, builds a more connected, inclusive, and forward-thinking Kettering. On behalf of the Kettering Arts Council, thank you for your leadership and continued support. Together, we are shaping a future where art and community thrive side-by-side.
We really are a community that has a great arts environment. If anyone out there listening to me tonight has never participated in any of the arts here in the city of Kettering, I urge you to make it your New Year's resolution that next year you are going to pick up the catalog, which comes, I think, bimonthly? Once a month? Quarterly? Quarterly. Seems like there's several different ones that are actually pushing things, but the choices that you have in front of you are just incredible for families and individuals. So thank you all for the Arts Council. None of it would happen without the Arts Council. So thank you for those of you who give your time for that, and enjoy the arts. Great. We have no public hearings this evening. We do, at this time, allow members of the audience to come down and address council on any of the information about legislation on tonight's agenda, and they may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Speakers must state their name and address, and comments should be addressed to council. If you have comments that are not about the legislation on tonight's agenda, there will be an opportunity at the end of the meeting for you to be heard. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address any of the legislative items on tonight's agenda? Okay. Not seeing any. We will move on to ordinances and second reading. We have two, and we'll start with Mrs. Fisher.
Your Honor, I do have an ordinance to amend the text of various sections of the City of Kettering zoning code. It is requested by Planning and Development Department, and I move for its approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Let's see, Tom? There you are.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. This particular amendment, this is in second reading. We held a public hearing on it in the first reading. It's been recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. It contains a lot of updates and tweaks and clarifications throughout the code, but three major things that I just wanted to point out was, is that we created a new business district called Neighborhood Business District. It is intended to address those business areas that are adjacent to residential neighborhoods that are, need to be, they're more sensitive and need to be protected a little bit more from, say, auto-oriented uses, but at more neighborhood level. We addressed fencing requirements and short-term rental units in our code. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have an ordinance in second reading to amend the traffic control map and the traffic control file of the city of Kettering regarding Sunny Crest Lane and Winding Way, and to repeal ordinance number 3505-91 and section 1A of ordinance number This is requested by the Engineering Department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, let's see, Steve.
Thank you, Your Honor. Recently, the Engineering Department received two separate petitions for the removal and the implementation of parking restrictions on certain streets in Kettering. First, on Russell Avenue and Fletcher Avenue, in regarding the removal of on-street parking restrictions at 1501 Fletcher Avenue, which is, which will rescind ordinance 3505-91 and ordinance 3206-93, section 1A. Also, residents along Sunny Crest Lane, majority of residents have petitioned for on-street parking to be restricted to only the east side of the street south of Winding Way. There's been ongoing issues there for a while when streets, or, excuse me, when vehicles are parked on both sides of the street, which requires temporary parking restrictions every time a party or an event occurs at one of the private residences. The neighborhood got together, they decided to implement permanent restrictions as a way to eliminate the need to contact the city every time they have an event. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept a district incentive grant from Montgomery County Solid Waste Management District. The estimated cost is $13,025. The amount budgeted in 2026 is $3,907.50. That 50 cents is very important. This is requested by the Sustainability Office, and I move for approval.
Second.
Moved in second. Mr. Grayson.
Hi.
No, Mr. Bergstetter.
Yes, thank you. So this resolution will allow us to accept a district incentive grant from Montgomery County Solid Waste Management District. We actually submitted two grants, and we've been successful on both. So I think at the previous meeting, there was a grant acceptance for recycling receptacles at Frey's Pavilion Civic Commons area. This one is for a new program that we're frankly pretty excited about. It will facilitate the construction of a food waste drop-off location with associated signage and collection buckets for participants that the city is piloting, starting here in the coming months and going into 2026. So this funding will be used to purchase building materials, hardware, and signage to create a food waste drop-off station behind Tannenberg Kennels on Stroop Road, where our leaf mulch site pickup area is located. We also have a community recycling dumpster at that location as well, so that mulch area is becoming our little sustainability hub, I guess, for organic waste and which will, what will happen with the waste is it will be sent to a processor, will collect it basically like once a week, and take it to their facility. It'll be intermixed, and then created, an organic product will be created once the process of the waste. So we're very excited about this. It will also include the purchase of lidded collection buckets. So first 100 participants that sign up for the program to collect a bucket, they'll have their food waste bucket, and you will take it, use it at your home, and then take it over to the dump area that will be, collection area that will be built over behind Tannenberg. So again, very excited about this project. We're very thankful for the grant from Montgomery County Solid Waste District, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions?
I only, I had one too. You go. Estimated time that we think this will be operational?
Probably first quarter of 2026.
Thank you.
Ms. DuVall?
I just want to make a comment that since creating the Sustainability Office, we've seen a pretty steady, steady stream of resolutions coming from that office, and I'm wholly impressed with the job that Don Kirchner has done. And so many of these relate with their grants. It's not costing us money. It's just wonderful to see, and I just wanted to throw that in there. Positive progress.
Thank you. I think you've got a lot of support for that comment.
Positive progress.
Yeah. Okay, call the roll.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes. Okay, we will move on to resolutions, and I think, what?
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to contract with Montgomery County Public Defender Commission and Montgomery County Public Defender Office to provide mandated legal counsel to indigent persons appearing in the Kettering Municipal Court. Estimated cost is $50,000. That is the amount budgeted and is requested by the Law Department. I move for its approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Grayson?
Yes, Your Honor. As you may know, the city is required by law to provide legal counsel for indigent persons charged with a violation of a city ordinance, for which the penalty or any possible adjudication includes the potential loss of liberty. This resolution will authorize a contract with the Montgomery County Public Defender Commission and the Montgomery County Defender's Office, Public Defender's Office, to provide the required legal counsel. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions? Okay. Call the roll.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept a district incentive grant from Montgomery County Solid Waste Management District. The estimated cost is $13,025. The amount budgeted in 2026 is $3,907.50. That 50 cents is very important. This is requested by the Sustainability Office, and I move for approval.
Second.
Moved in second. Mr. Grayson?
Hi.
No, Mr. Bergstetter.
Yes, thank you. So this resolution will allow us to accept a district incentive grant from Montgomery County Solid Waste Management District. We actually submitted two grants, and we've been successful on both. So I think at the previous meeting, there was a grant acceptance for recycling receptacles at Frey's Pavilion Civic Commons area. This one is for a new program that we're frankly pretty excited about. It will facilitate the construction of a food waste drop-off location with associated signage and collection buckets for participants that the city is piloting, starting here in the coming months and going into 2026. So this funding will be used to purchase building materials, hardware, and signage to create a food waste drop-off station behind Tannenberg Kennels on Stroop Road, where our leaf mulch site pickup area is located. We also have a community recycling dumpster at that location as well, so that mulch area is becoming our little sustainability hub, I guess, for organic waste and which will, what will happen with the waste is it will be sent to a processor, will collect it basically like once a week, and take it to their facility. It'll be intermixed, and then created, an organic product will be created once the process of the waste. So we're very excited about this. It will also include the purchase of lidded collection buckets. So first 100 participants that sign up for the program to collect a bucket, they'll have their food waste bucket, and you will take it, use it at your home, and then take it over to the dump area that will be, collection area that will be built over behind Tannenberg. So again, very excited about this project. We're very thankful for the grant from Montgomery County Solid Waste District, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions?
I only, I had one too. You go. Estimated time that we think this will be operational?
Probably first quarter of 2026.
Thank you.
Ms. DuVall?
I just want to make a comment that since creating the Sustainability Office, we've seen a pretty steady, steady stream of resolutions coming from that office, and I'm wholly impressed with the job that Don Kirchner has done. And so many of these relate with their grants. It's not costing us money. It's just wonderful to see, and I just wanted to throw that in there. Positive progress.
Thank you. I think you've got a lot of support for that comment.
Positive progress.
Yeah. Okay, call the roll.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes. Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to amend Resolution 11231-25 regarding security improvements at the Government Center Campus. This is estimated cost of $250,000, but it's been revised to $337,400. It's requested by the Public Service Department. I move for its approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Grayson?
Yes, Your Honor. I think Mr. Bergstetter was going to handle that one as well.
Okay. Thank you. The 2020 capital, excuse me, 2025 capital improvement program budget included $250,000 in improvements to security on the Government Center Campus, which includes this building
command center for the Tactical Crime Suppression Unit, also known as TCSU. TCSU includes, I believe it's eight communities that are a part of that, and partial funding for necessary upgrades to radio consoles for the Kettering Dispatch Center. Each proposal includes a request for funding of up to the maximum amount of $250,000. A date for the project approval has not been provided. If approved, the project is expected to be fully implemented no later than August 31st, 2026. Once approved, the cost of the project will be initially funded by the city and reimbursed by the state. It is the Police Department's intention to transfer ownership of the mobile command center to the Miami Valley Technology and Communication Group, which we call MVCC, although that is the new name after the merger, who would hold title and cover insurance, track equipment inventory, and maintain the equipment on behalf of all of the TCSU members, which will require some additional administrative tasks if we're successful in getting the grant and administering the transfer. But be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing a contribution to the Dayton Area Chamber of Commerce EPI Foundation. Estimated cost $25,000. That is the amount budgeted and is requested by the city manager's office. I move for its approval.
Second.
Mr. Greason?
Yes, Your Honor. This is a request to contribute funds to a regional effort aimed at improving air service in the Dayton region, specifically at Dayton International Airport, where they're seeking to not only restore but also expand direct air service to targeted markets. Of course, improved air service supports the economy, not only the regional economy but Kettering businesses who need access to markets and Kettering residents and their families who may want to conduct leisure travel. Increased air service, particularly non-stop service to top markets, helps the region as it competes for jobs, visitors, and investment. It has been requested that City of Kettering contribute to what is called a Minimum Revenue Guarantee Bank, which is being administered by the Dayton Area Chamber of Commerce Foundation, which is a 501(c)(3). The region is seeking to raise $600,000, which will be matched by $2.4 million from Jobs Ohio, who is supporting airports like Dayton in their efforts to expand air service, particularly non-stop air service in Ohio. It is my understanding that $300,000 has already been raised of that $600,000, and it is proposed that the City of Kettering commit $25,000 in funds that are dedicated for economic development purposes to support this regional initiative to improve air service. I would be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, seeing none, call the roll.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to support submission of an application by IRG Kettering LLC for a State of Ohio Brownfield Remediation Program Fund Assessment Grant for the former Kettering Delphi Facility. This is requested by city manager's office, and I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Ryan?
Thank you, Your Honor. Please, counsel, this resolution supports IRG's efforts to obtain grant funding that will help them address onsite environmental issues, which are legacies from the facility's operation under the Delphi banner. There is, excuse me, there is no cost to the city in support of this particular application, and the application is to help advance the attainment of a no further action letter from the Ohio EPA. The IRG parent company has been a previous recipient to grants through this program that were formerly administered by the County Land Bank. At this time, the site remains under active consideration in several site selection processes through the state of Ohio, Jobs Ohio, and continues to be actively listed and marketed by IRG ICP. Staff is happy to answer any questions or concerns that counsel may have. We would ask counsel adopt this legislation this evening.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions about this? Okay, seeing none, call the roll.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
I have a resolution to make supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures for the City of Kettering, State of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2025. The estimated cost is $113,882.97. This is requested by the Finance Department and moved for its approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Greason?
Yes, Your Honor. There are two items here that make up the supplemental appropriation that's being requested. One is $4,100 is being requested to carry over a donation from the American Legion Post and to the Kettering Police Foundation. Essentially, it's donated in 2024. We want to carry those dollars over into 2025. Those funds will be used to purchase AEDs, Automatic Electronic Defibrillators. That was a tongue twister a little bit there. KPD received $43,500 in donations over '23 and '24, during which AEDs were purchased totaling $39,400. The remaining amount needs to be appropriated for what I hope, what are going to be, I think, the final AED purchases out of this program. Also, the second, earlier, the second item is that earlier in the evening, you authorized accepting funds, $109,782, from the State of Ohio for a police officer continued professional training. This appropriates those funds for use in offsetting salary costs for the required training. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, anyone have any questions? Call the roll.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes. Okay, we have no ordinances in first reading this evening. Mrs. Haislip, do we have any certifications and petitions?
Your Honor, we do not have any certifications or petitions this evening.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move to the managers' report and community update. Mr. Greason?
Yes, Your Honor. We always like to take this opportunity to highlight our blood pressure clinic dates, and there are remaining dates in November and December that are depicted on the screen. This is an effort to promote a healthy community, and if anybody desires to have their blood pressure taken, please check out the dates on the screen and go to the Dayton Metro Library Kettering Moraine Branch on one of those dates. Medicare open enrollment. We have a wonderful employee, our Senior Services Coordinator Natalie Storms, who can assist eligible citizens in their Medicare enrollment, which started on October 15th but runs through December 7th. If you would like to make an individual appointment with Natalie, we encourage you to contact the number on the screen. I think the snow has resulted in more leaves falling, at least in my yard, and don't worry, leaf pickup has begun, and we will be working hard to collect leaves in the coming weeks. Residents should rake the leaves only to the curb. The machines don't take sticks, grass, or sod. They're not good for our machines, so we ask them not to be included. And we also want people to know that those leaves and sticks are accepted at the Yard Debris Center. If there is any information anyone needs, questions, we have a leaf hotline, and they can contact us at the number on the screen. Our Board of Community Relations is, once again, ensuring that Kettering is home to all of us and encouraging all of us to learn more about Native American Heritage Month, which is November. And if you want to learn more about Native American Heritage Month, there is information on how you can do so on the screen, and we appreciate the Board of Community Relations' effort to highlight this and other important heritage months in our community. It is the month in which we celebrate Small Business Saturday, which is November 29th, and I don't want to steal Mr. Scott's thunder, but we encourage people to show support for Kettering small businesses. Kettering's administrative offices will be closed Thursday, November 27th and November 28th for Thanksgiving. And due to that Thanksgiving holiday, Rumkey Service will be delayed one day as it is customarily on major holidays, and the date changes are on the screen. If you have questions, you can also contact Rumkey's Waste and Recycling Center. I think one of our favorite events, everyone's favorite event of the year is the mayor's tree lighting Friday, December 5th. Mayor Laner, I think this will be your last tree lighting as mayor, so from 6:00 to 8:00, please join us at Lincoln Park Civic Commons. One more, two more things. The city council meetings for the month of December will be held on the dates on the screen. This is a little different. You'll note that the 2nd and the 9th, and so, and we're doing those back-to-back one week apart. We want to make sure that people are aware of that. On the 2nd, we'll be, have an extended workshop to discuss the budget that will start at 5:00 PM. And I will end by thanking our veterans and saying Happy Veterans Day. We had a wonderful event that I'm sure will be highlighted in council remarks, but just want to express our appreciation for the veterans in our community and the veterans who work in our organization, of which we have many. We are thankful for them.
Thank you, Mr. Greason. At this time, if you would like to come to speak before city council on any topic, you may do so now. Each speaker will have a five-minute limit. Speakers are asked to state their name and address. Is there anyone who would like to speak to city council tonight? Nobody wants to talk to us. Okay.
Thank you for all coming.
We'll move on to city council reports, and I'll ask Mrs. Fisher to start.
Well, I'm going to jump right on Mr. Greason's comment, and I'm going to thank a lot of people. Number one, our VFW honor guard, that they came out and supported that ceremony today. They were very busy, and that was, that was their third one that they had already done today. Also, our Latham Senior Choir, they sang, was awesome. Pastor Kagan, who gave a prayer, and then, last but not least, retired Colonel Ken Lavoy. Left us with some great words to live by, act upon, and also I'll summarize to say that not only should we thank our veterans every day, but we need to be doing things for our veterans. And so, what a great message, and so I do appreciate all those folks that did help support that great event that a lot of people came to, and yes, it was very cold. Second thing I want to bring up, ma'am, is a lot of times, a lot of us up here, we're in a, I'll say, habit, tradition of supporting our schools. And last weekend, I had the opportunity to participate in the Fort 5K. And so, Don and Pam Fortner put on this event in memory of their daughter Melissa, who died from breast cancer. And the money does go to the girls' basketball team, and they have exceeded from what they had last year to this year, and so I hope to see a lot of people out there because this old lady got second place, that tells you everybody was young, at that particular 5K, but it was a great event and was all on Fairmont's campus. We never left the campus. That's all I have, ma'am.
You said you got second place.
Out of the old ladies. Out of the old ladies, sixties and above. So, you know, it just tells you, everybody was young in it, except for a couple of us.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, congrats. I, too, would like to thank all of our veterans and wish them a Happy Veterans Day. I have to give a shout out to my father-in-law, my favorite veteran, I guess. He's a longtime Kettering resident, Louis Hewart. We appreciate everything our veterans do for us. I'd also like to congratulate and welcome, Dan Palmer's here tonight. He'll be joining us up here next year. Hey, Dan, congratulations. I'm excited to serve with you. I know that's what you're all about, is service for the community. So excited to work with you. Yep, welcome. And lastly, I would like to give a shout out to Gary Schussler. He's our Parks Superintendent. He was recently published, he was a co-author in the National Parks and Recreation Magazine, and his article focused on the skills and abilities needed for success in parks' operation and maintenance. So we have phenomenal parks in Kettering. I love our parks. Just proud of Gary for sharing his expertise on a national stage, so it's a pretty great thing for Kettering. So that's it for me.
Thank you.
A couple of things for me. On the Veterans Day front, Jack, I appreciate your comments. I was really moved by our guest speaker mentioning his 103-year-old father, ex-Army Airborne from World War II, was his motivation to join the service. I also want to give a shout out to both of my son-in-law's former Army Ranger Seth Sho and active-duty U.S. Air Force Lieutenant Colonel Trent Schill, who served our country and have served our country. Also, we'll talk about a sporting event this Saturday in Kettering at Indian River Park is the 38 Mid East Cross Country Championship. Ladies start at 11:00 AM, the boys start 11:30 AM, and banquet at 12:30 and an awards ceremony at 1:00 PM. This draws runners from the entire Midwest and is a great event at our Indian River Park. So I'd encourage people to come out. The weather will be warm Saturday.
Back to 60. I don't have much of an update tonight. I just want to say Happy Veterans Day, and especially to my favorite veteran, my dad. Veteran of the Air Force, he doesn't live in Kettering, he lives in Columbus, but, you know, nobody's perfect, so, you know. Happy Veterans Day to him. That's it.
First, just kudos to the team at the Lathrum and the Rec Center for a great arts and crafts event on Saturday. I got to stock up on kettle corn and early Christmas gifts, so thank you for that event. Got to hang out with Bill for a few minutes on Saturday in the crowd. Also, I just want to give thank you to Don Kirchner, the city ability manager here. I was the guest speaker at the Employee Wellness Lunch on Thursday, speaking of my favorite, one of my favorite topics, reducing household food waste, which is a passion of mine. It's a long weird story, but this is about getting into the composting business for the city is just great news. One-fourth of all landfill masses is residential food waste. It's a disaster, and there's ways we can mitigate it, and this is one step with what the city's doing under Don's leadership. On the topic of that, also, just, the last two weeks with the reduction and the removal of SNAP benefits, many of our neighbors have been in distress, and it's caused inconveniences and hardships and stress and anxiety for a lot of our neighbors, and it's been really encouraging to see neighbors step up. And community boxes have popped up around the community, multiple food drives for the pantries that serve our residents, and even folks like the Dunlap family in my old neighborhood in Eber South on Endover just made extra meals and invited neighbors to pick up meals from their house. So I'm just encouraged that in a time of crisis where people are suffering and the ramifications of our federal government's chaos, that neighbors are taking care of neighbors, and it's just a reminder of the power that we have when we just look next door to take care of folks. And on the heels of Veterans Day, it's a good time to check on those neighbors who are veterans. So we have phenomenal parks in Kettering. I love our parks. Just proud of Gary for sharing his expertise on a national stage, so it's a pretty great thing for Kettering. So that's it for me.
Thank you.
A couple of things for me. On the Veterans Day front, Jack, I appreciate your comments. I was really moved by our guest speaker mentioning his 103-year-old father, ex-army airborne from World War II was his motivation to join the circus. I also want to give a shout out to both of my son-in-law's former Army Ranger Seth Show and active-duty U.S. Air Force Lieutenant Colonel Trent Schill, who served our country and have served our country. Also, we'll talk about a sporting event this Saturday in Kettering at Indian Riffle Park is the 38th Mid East Cross Country Championship. Ladies start at 11:00 AM, the boys start 11:30 AM, and banquet at 12:30 and an award ceremony at 1:00 PM. This draws runners from the antar Midwest and is a great event at our Indian Riffle Park. So I'd encourage people to come out. The weather will be warm Saturday.
Back to 60.
I don't have much of an update tonight. I just want to say Happy Veterans Day, and especially to my favorite veteran, my dad, a veteran of the Air Force. He doesn't live in Kettering, he lives in Columbus, but, you know, nobody's perfect, so, you know. Happy Veterans Day to him. That's it.
First, just kudos to the team at the Latham and the Rec Center for a great arts and crafts event on Saturday. I got to stock up on kettle corn and early Christmas gifts, so thank you for that event. Got to hang out with Bill for a few minutes on Saturday in the crowd. Also, I just want to give a thank you to Don Kirchner, the sustainability manager here. I was the guest speaker at the Employee Wellness Lunch on Thursday, speaking of my favorite, one of my favorite topics, reducing household food waste, which is a passion of mine. It's a long weird story, but this is about getting into the composting business for the city is just great news. One-fourth of all landfill masses residential food waste. It's a disaster, and there's ways we can mitigate it, and this is one step with what